With the meeting of the Somerset Berkeley Regional School Committee, I want to acknowledge that we have been joined by our student representative Isabel Pierre-Denis. The next item on the agenda this evening under Student Teaching and Learning is in fact our Student Support Report. At our last student advisory committee meeting, we didn't really have too much to update on. Everything seems to be going fine. All we really did there was just some basic housekeeping stuff for us on our end, just making sure we're not at crisis. We just planned over all of our meetings for the next few years and set up some, oh my gosh, sorry, created lots of documents for everyone to, if you more organized, in our end and just get along for the rest of the year. So, nothing to report on really, but all good.
Good is good. Thank you. The next item on the agenda, recognition of our October Visionaries. The committee would like to recognize Maggie Arena, Empathetic; Savannah Batello, Academic; Barina Ishak, Digital Citizen; Noah James, Independent; Elena Martin, Resilient; Peyton Massey, Respectful; Julia Marrera, Academic; and Lila Trobridge, Independent. Congratulations to those students for their hard work. The next item on the agenda is Public Input. Before Mr. Machado goes, I just want to, this is technically public input, but I just want to acknowledge the committee on Friday, October 31st, received correspondence from Mr. Patrick Higgins, and to summarize his correspondence, he was drawing our attention to some budget shortfalls in neighboring districts, and he was expressing his concern that we pay close attention to our financial status, and an update on that is shortly on the agenda, but I wanted to recognize that. We received his correspondence, there's a link to a full story that everyone has access to. I think we've all heard the news regarding our colleagues in Whitman-Hanson. We're happy to say that we're not facing similar circumstances at this time. So, thank you, Mr. Higgins. Okay, Mr. Machado.
Victor Machado. It was a great meeting. You know, we got to acknowledge some hog workers that's been in the district for a while. I'm gonna keep this brief, I just wanna bring it to the school committee's attention that what Mr. Schoonover says, that an average employee during that time worked 28 years, and Mr. Aggar worked 57 years. In the next couple of months, I will be presenting the board. I think it warrants, for someone who's dedicated so many years and actually followed and was really a driving force of so many kids, to make sure they got into college, they even got their high school diploma, and some of his students actually have moved on from college, you know, VCC, they got their two-years degree, and I don't think I have to say much, but I think it warrants the regional school committee to consider perhaps naming something after him. I would say, you know, perhaps he was a lover of all the tulips in the front, perhaps maybe call it the Plaza of William Aggar, or something like that, but I just wanted to bring that to your attention, so you're not caught off guard when it is being presented. And then the second item, another, that's another dear to both Dr. Brelsford and I. Unfortunately, she was not able to join us, she wanted to join me today. Deca today has been as successful as it was because of, in my opinion, not only because of our leaders, but also two community members. Two community members that I was very fortunate to get to serve with, A, as a school committee member, but also eat her cooking during some of the, during the events. I would urge the committee to really consider looking at another nomination that, in this case, Dr. Brelsford and I will be submitting as co-presenters, to really consider naming the school store after Chris and March, you know, from Berkeley. I think they are what we would call a true community service. You know, this family bled blue before we were even a region. So, again, I hope you guys would consider those two when it's presented to you in a couple of months. Obviously, you would have to have four of them unless you waive these things, which you have every right, but at any point, if you need more information after we present it, please let us know, and we'll be getting all the data for you. Thank you.
Is there any other public input? The next item on the agenda of Business and Financial Matters is our October.
The financial status report is expenditures up until August 29th, November 13th, once we promote up-to-date data. At this point, that 85% of the budget is either expended or encumbered. A few things that we wanted to focus on before we present budget amendments is the certification of excess and deficiencies. It has been submitted to DOR, and we're awaiting certification. Once that's done, it'll be part of our budget amendments to bring some of the money up to capital to cover the cost of the projects going on at the school. The second item that we're awaiting is full approval of our grants. Right now, our MBA grant has been approved, but we're still waiting approval of our ESF grants or our title grants. So, at this point, some of those expenditures are charged to general fund until they are approved, and when they are approved, we can go retro back to the approval date on the grant award notification. After those two things are done, which we're hoping to be needed in the next few weeks, we'll be able to bring budget amendments back to the committee. In order to align with the school committee's policy, what we did do is provide narratives of any mine that was over budget and where we'd be taking the money from, so you have the narrative on what we're doing, but the formal budget amendment will be presented at the next meeting.
Does anyone have any questions? Thank you, the narrative is very helpful. Thank you very much. Okay. The next item on the agenda under Unfinished Business is to discuss an Act on Mathematics Graduation Requirements. This is an item we previously discussed and voted on, looking for some clarification on with which graduating class this should be implemented.
Yeah, it was an oversight. I believe this policy was, had its second reading at the previous meeting, but we did not identify with what class this will be implemented. So, we really do need to understand when that would be. My, I've had conversations, but my preference, my recommendation would be with a class of 2027, our current sophomores, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, 2028, our current sophomores. And I've thought about this quite a bit with our current juniors, and I'll have to say, with everything that we've, I talked about it at a previous meeting, with the competency determination, and my frustration from the state about changing the rules mid-game and having us react to that and really change requirements on students, I feel like I would be a bit of a hypocrite if I recommended something starting with our current junior class for next year. And Mr. Lawrence, who's here, he can answer any questions that you may have, but he compiled some data for our current juniors, and we have 22 juniors right now who are not on track at fulfilling a four-year math requirement. And of those 26, four of those students are actually two-years behind in math already, which means as seniors, with a four-year requirement, they would need to take three math classes, take and pass three math classes. So, please correct me if I misrepresent any of this.
26 is right, and then four need two-years, that's correct. I mean, two, only two, three-years in next, in next year, a four-year requirement, that's correct.
And then there would be an additional 10 students who are, 10 juniors who are currently one-year behind, so those 10 students would have to double up in math next year, taking two math classes and passing both of those. And then there are another 12 students right now who are on the fence. Right now, they are, we've subbed a long way to go in the school year, so I don't wanna throw the towel in, but there are 12 students right now who are questionable about whether status will be at the end of this year, who may need to double up next year. I'm certain not all 12 of those will be, but we're looking at 14 students plus potentially that will double up. So, with that, and just knowing the number of students, if we were to implement this with our current juniors, I think we'd be setting a number of kids up for really significant challenge to get their diploma at the end in June of 2027. But I do understand, you know, the importance of a four-year math requirement, and ensuring that students are college-ready, fulfilling the requirements necessary to attend Massachusetts colleges. Obviously, that is our goal, but I think we'd have more success with our students, starting with the class of 28, our current sophomores, where there's more time to work with them and to ensure that they can be successful in taking four-years of math with fulfilling the requirements over the junior-receiving years.
I concur with that statement. I mean, I'm a big proponent of math, math in schools, I have a math background, a lot of math is my job. So, I think we're moving in the right direction, certainly, that we want four-years, four-years of math for the students, but I don't, I don't think it's fair to, you know, move the yobstick in the, in the middle of the game. So, like Mr. Schoonover said, we have approximately 22 kids here who would be at risk of maybe possibly not graduating, because they've only gotten two-years of math for this part, how are they gonna get two more-years of math in their senior year? It's gonna be extremely difficult for those kids, and I don't think we wanna put any excess burden on them, so I would take Mr. Schoonover's recommendation of starting this with the class of 28. If I could just add too, so Mr. Lawrence gave us this information, but we did take it to the next level to figure out of these, let's just say the 14 students who definitely need to take at least two or three classes next year with a four-year requirement, if they're also behind in English or Social Studies, like, we just don't know, we didn't go to that level to figure out what other courses they need, and we only have seven periods that students have, you know, can take these classes, so if someone needs to take three credits in math, along with their English and PE requirements and potentially Social Studies and Science, there isn't enough room in their schedule for eight or nine classes without having online learning, flexible, the flex programs in the afternoon and potentially taking advantage of our community school offerings in the evening, which we usually have students doing that to, you know, one or two every year, just to make sure that they can cross that finish line on time, but we would, I think, be expanding that more than what we typically do.
I have a question. So, for the math courses, are they all full-year courses? So, I actually respectfully disagree.
I know.
And the reason is, and I'm not to throw up impediments to students graduating, and if I sound frustrated, I'm frustrated with myself as well, but I feel like this is something we should've honestly done a long time ago. I feel like, for us, I think it was over a year ago, when I looked at comparable districts, and pretty much everyone else has had a four-year math requirement for a very long time, and, you know, shame on me for not pushing harder sooner. I think, and I understand, because I, students and I, who would have to double up on math in fact, it's interesting to me that, like, there's no arguing about four-years of English, but the four-years of math seems somehow be, you know. I think that if we're graduating students who might have multiple pathways in terms of post-secondary pursuits, but we're really doing them a disservice if, if we're not making them eligible for applying to Massachusetts State College and University. And, you know, I know the number we've had before is like about 20% of our students typically are not graduating with a fourth-year math. And I think honestly, we could be more innovative, and I think we could, I just hate kicking the can down the road, I understand what you're saying about moving goalposts, but they're not gonna get their senior year back again. You know, they only get to be seniors once, and they only get our support to get to that place once. I would urge us to think about semesterizing some math courses, doesn't need to be a full-year course, and to show flexibility. We could have a personal, you know, personal finance class, or business finance class, the 21st Century Applications of Math class. You know, math classes that are geared towards students who want to pursue the trades, because math is, electricians and plumbers in HVAC, techs use math. So, I think that, I feel like, and there's always a process, there's always a process for a principal and a superintendent to waive locally requirements. I, I understand what you're saying, but I'm frankly just tired of waiting. I think we're too late, we've already missed kids, and I think we do them a disservice. These 26 students might say their plan is not to go to Bridgewater State University or something, but they also can change their mind. And if we don't push this, but also in a way that's flexible to their individual circumstances, which I actually think it's not an either-or, I think we can do both, then we're, then if they change their minds, now they're gonna have to enroll VCC and pay for a course, or take a non-credit program in a math course, or something else. So, I know it's really a question of timing, and I suspect I'm in the minority, and that's okay, but, and it's also part of a much larger conversation about our need to raise the bar and expectations for all of our students, and graduate them ready for whatever path they choose. And if 20% of our kids aren't, don't have that fourth math course, and don't take math in their senior year, if kids wanna go to Eisenberg, don't take pre-calc, they're not going, right? They're not admissible. So, I worry that there's a little bit of the low expectations here, like the kindness and the compassion is not always held in the best interest of the kids. So, that is my concern with waiting. I think it would require us to change how we do some, how we offer courses. I don't wanna see a kid, you know, taking three math, full-year math courses and wanting ones online, that seems inhumane. But I also, I'm not sure we've gone the distance in exploring what are some of the things that we could do, you know. So, and yes, there are seven periods, so English, math, you know, Social Studies and Science are three-year requirements. And I don't wanna sound like I'm insensitive to the plight of those kids, but we actually I think have a double duty, like a more responsibility, to make sure that we're giving them what they need for life beyond Somerset Berkeley. So, I don't, I would be in favor of implementing it with the class of 2027, with those, with those caveats, which is, it doesn't have to be full-year math courses, and we maybe, we need to do some work to give them some alternatives. And at the end of the day, there's always administrative, you know, for extenuating circumstances, you always had that option, and I, as a committee member, would support that, but I just, I just don't wanna wait anymore. And they haven't made course selection yet, I'm thinking to do that time, but it's not done yet. I think it's important that we say this is important, and I know, you know, there might be an elective or something that kids would rather take, but.
I think that's where the flexibility and the schedule comes in, to better allow for, because if you did have some semester-based courses, including electives and math classes, it could better allow for students to take, or, or looking at part-time classes as opposed to having everything be full-time. Now, I know we also talked about previously having Computer Science count as a math course.
It does, yes.
Right, so, you know, that's one way that we're being flexible in trying to accommodate students' personal interests, and, you know, I would be inclined to support your position, Ms. Andrews, and, you know, maybe push the administration a little further to be a little bit more flexible with the scheduling component, in order to both meet the needs of the students and hold them to high expectations sooner than kicking it off, you know, another, kicking the can down the road another year or so.
Well, I guess my question is, from not being an educator though, is if you're gonna give a child two semester courses and have that count for two-years of math, are they really getting that much more education in those two semester courses than it would be in a full-year course of math, and is that just kinda, you know, pushing them through in that aspect? Do you know what I'm saying? Like, if they're taking, you know, Geometry 1 and Geometry 2, are they just really taking geometry, but it's divided up into two semesters so they can, you know, punch the ticket for 2027? Like, is it really giving them a better education?
In my experience, I think it can, so what I've seen a lot of students who take through Algebra 1, go through Geometry, and that's when things start to get trickier, right? That's where, and so, I think that you can have some of those more like, what I would maybe call sort of applied math courses, that, like personal finance. And if you semesterize your courses, then it also frees up in your master schedule, you can give kids the flexibility so they don't have to choose from, you know, either a math course or another elective. So, I don't think it's just having it, you know, having the content, it's identifying content, right, that is relevant for some of these students, and I don't know these individual stories of these students, my guess is some of them are in some of our subgroups that we wanna make sure we're supporting with extra resources and flexibility and innovation, and so I think that it's incredibly typical for high school seniors to take a personal finance course for a semester. And the Department of Higher Ed requires say that a student has to take math in the senior year, it does not say it has to be the entire year. So, just by doing that, they could meet that requirement and make them eligible for a direct admission without having to jump through other hoops later, if that were the actual scenario. It's, it's pretty standard in many, would you agree, in many local comparable districts, and even not comparable districts?
Right. I would agree with that.
I guess my question is, how realistic is it to add semester-based math classes for next year?
Well, one of the things that we're looking at anyway is, I'd like to add, and I've talked to our content coordinators and administration here, about exploring just offering more semester-based classes. I think that offers some good flexibility for our students, allows them to take, not every kid wants to take Computer Science, but maybe they'll take Computer Science for half a year and explore it, rather than devoting an entirety of it. So, there, I think there are some areas where kids can, we can get creative in having kids explore more topics by having semester classes. So, that is something that we are looking to do, that would require, I think, a significant, it'll be a large investment in time to do that, because it's not something, it's not a way that we currently work our schedules, except for PE, Health, City. So, we have some, a few semester classes, but not many. But I know Mr. Lawrence is also already exploring a personal finance class, I don't know if you want to, may I, is it okay, invite Mr. Lawrence to just share some of the things that you have? Please.
So, I can answer a few of your questions. One of the questions I have is if we, so my, when I thought four-years, I thought 20 credits. So, if we are going to semester-based, those are usually two-and-a-half credits, because they're a half-year course based on our, like, the way our school runs. So, if they don't need 20 credits and they need, you know, it goes by courses taken, not what the credits are worth, that does change things, obviously. A lot of the schools that you're referring to that have half-year, they still use some sort of a modified block schedule, so they're taking classes, if they're taking like Algebra the first half of the year, Geometry the other, that's like a 90-minute block of math, like, in math. One of the other things that we deal with is that, like, of the, like, there's 25 top districts in the state, I did some research, and of the 10, I'm not saying we wanna go back this way, five of them still offer CP, ACP, Honors, and AP. So, what we're doing is, is we're saying, we want you to have four-years, we've removed all of our lowest-level classes. So, we're asking the past four, and some of the students would've gone to like summer school after grade nine, but knowing they had a three-year requirement, say they failed three classes, their guidance counselor might've pushed them to take like Science and Social Studies, saying, you're never gonna recover a full-year math in six weeks, like, we'd prefer you to save that and take it next year. So, my hesitation is, is we would've had these kids take math in summer school if they had a four-year requirement. I think what Mr. Schoonover said about freshman and sophomore year, I think that is, those kids, we have plenty of time to remediate, to get them the support that they need to graduate, but the class of 28, the 27 class, I'm concerned, because we don't have all the pieces, and we're down to 9.4 math teachers. So, to offer these semester-based classes, we just took on this year four sub-separate classes within the math department. It is going very well, I'm glad we did it, but we have Math 1, Math 2, Math 3, eventually possibly Math 4, so we have teachers being pulled from regular sections. So, if we go to semester-based classes, I just don't know where else we pull from, 'cause we also are bringing back Honors Calculus for a student to wanna take Calculus prior to college, but don't want the pressure of the AP exam. We are also bringing back, like, we brought Computer Science as a part of the math department, as Mr. Schoonover said. We are looking at like a financial mathematics course, whether that be a semester-based class or a full-year course, just to give them like the skills they need, like life skills, investments, like understanding how to put your money away, we, we're all on board on that. But the problem with seven periods is, there's only so many things that these kids can take. So, as much as I'm not math-biased, I want them to come to the math department, take financial literacy, take stats, we have more AP offerings than we've ever had, I want them to do that, they also have other obligations, and some of them have other interests, and some of our disinterested learners are struggling students, to put them into three math classes next year, even if it's one full year and two half-years, when some of these kids like genuinely wanna do something else that we offer here, I think is we're just pigeonholing them with the seven classes. So, I think it's a bigger discussion. I know, Ms. Ashley, you had mentioned like, looking at our big schedule, like, we used to offer eight periods, like, that's a whole extra choice during the course of the year, there just wasn't as much time on learning. So, like, we have to, I think you were here when you might've done that, but we had, we were able to offer more choices for them, and with the seven, if a kid has to take two maths next year, two Englishes, I don't know what else is left for them, is what I guess I'm seeing on the menu. But we, we're ready to offer like Honors Calculus next year, Computer Science, there's three choices, they have the Project Lead the Way courses, where it's just Principles, then we have AP offerings, and then there's like the second piece of the Project Lead the Way. We also are bringing back like a class, like Pre-Algebra for students to, we have a lot of students who either missed time in middle school, or out of school period, or have never passed a math class through middle school. or out of school period or have never passed a math class through middle school. So this will get them the foundational skills they need, and then they'll go into Algebra One, Geometry, Algebra Two to have their four years of math. If a student wants to go beyond that, like, and get to a four-year, like, a higher four-year college, they could take Geometry and Algebra Two together, just like some of our students do now. But we have a menu of options, but we also have nine point two staff members, or nine point four, I should say. So it's just, we can only offer so many things, and the students dictate that. Like, if we offer a class that they don't sign up for, it gets cut. Because usually the minimum is ten to twelve students. If we don't have about ten.
Fifteen.
Well, okay, you've been fifteen. It used to be ten to twelve, so now we're at fifteen. So if I don't get fifteen, we can't run it. But I I'm willing to do anything, I'm willing to offer anything. I think, though, for the the kids that we have here, I don't disagree with you, I don't want to kick the can. I never was opposed to a four-year math requirement. I think we should have that. But we need the staffing and we need, like, I feel bad that we would have given kids different advice last year, the year before, about how they could have gotten out of this hole. But having a three-year requirement, they were like, okay, like, this is how we're gonna map you, this is what their, our advice was. So I feel like we gave them bad advice now because now they need a fourth year and we're trying to fit circles into like a square hole or vice versa. But I want them to graduate, like, that's my number one thing. And a lot of these kids, like, I think, like, personally, like, if you talk to those kids, like, hear what they have to say, like, let's, some of those kids will say to you, I want to do X, and a lot of them, unfortunately, it is not a four-year college. They want to go to BCC, or they want to go into the workforce, they want to pick up a trade. And to prevent them from graduating because we changed the graduation requirement, just, I feel terribly for them. But I'm open to opening the full program of studies, provide our kids everything that other schools offer, if we have the staffing.
I mean, just what Mr. Lawrence is saying, I mean, and and I know people in that situation. I mean, if you failed math as a freshman and then you didn't take it in summer school and, you know, you had difficulties with your sophomore year, and now you're a junior. I mean, really, what's the chance of that student being successful in their senior year? It's gonna tax them so heavily that they probably won't do as well in some other classes that they may have a better interest in. And I I really think that moving the goalposts right now for these kids is not fair for that handful of children. And they, and we really shouldn't do it, I don't think. I think I really still stand by Mr. Schoenover's recommendation of twenty twenty-eight because it gives those students, if they're, it's not quite a similar, but it gives them time to recover if they didn't do well in their freshman year or this year. Because they they know going forward in guidance and say, listen, you are gonna have to have four years, you need to do this, you need to do this now.
And I just think whatever we decide, just to outline, like, if it's years or credits will make a big difference, too. Because if it's like, you need fifteen credits, you know, that's a big difference, like, that's three years of math, four years. If you need twenty credits, that could either be three full years, two half-years, but if it's seventeen and a half credits, but you just have to take math in the fourth year, then we're saying you need three years and a half years. So like, that's something that, you know, with the half-year offerings, do they have to take two half-year maths? Or could you math partner up with PE? That's another question, because, like, twenty credits is very fixed. So if we're saying four years, twenty credits, half-year courses are not gonna solve our problem. If it's seventeen and a half, then they would have basically two chances for that half-year course at some point in time. That could be bumped on to a junior or senior class. But I think that's also something we want to establish, like, in writing, so that we know exactly what that target is.
I think that's a really good point. I think math core language is about courses or units.
Yep.
So I I think that's entirely fair, and I don't, I I certainly don't want to leave anyone's graduation. But I guess what I would love to hear is some of the things you alluded to, which is what do you need from us to make this happen? And so that's why I feel there's a lot of urgency here. And if it's staff, if it's resources, then we want to know that now before, because we're about to go have budget conversations, right? So if if what's in the way of making sure our kids are prepared, because I, again, even if they're not going into a four-year school, the math and and elementary is important in a lot of careers. If the if the impediment is the master schedule, if the impediment is staffing, resources, or other resources, then we can address those, and I think as the adults we need to. Urgently, I would argue. I I appreciate your, the distinction between credits and courses, and I think we can clarify that. I would say that I have experienced in a lot of places that have seven periods waterfall schedule. Taunton High School has six periods with no rotation and four-year requirement.
It's not ninety minutes.
And it's an hour-long course. And they do that in the context of Chapter Seventy-four programs, which also have tremendous hour requirements, right? So you have seniors at Taunton High School who are doing, like, a big chunk of their schedule might be in a Chapter Seventy-four program, but they have to take math and they have to take it through the senior year. I don't want to harm these kids, but I just, I think we've already done harm because we haven't pushed this hard enough. And that's my frustration. I just want to say, I I really, I need, this is me personally, I need to see a program of studies that is more flexible, that has some of the things Mr. Lawrence referenced with relevant math courses for where, you know, a changing world and market are growing. That remains prerequisite, that is more flexible, and that serves our kids for for the here and now. And that does not reduce the rigor or the expectations. Because at the end of the day, if we're graduating kids who who are struggling with Algebra, then we've already done that a disservice. And so that's, I guess, my frustration. I know I'm in the minority, so I won't belabor the point, but I'm very much asking the administration to please come back to us with a program of studies that enables our students, every single one of them, to get the math as well as the other things they need so that whatever their choices, they're well-prepared to do that. And I honestly think we haven't done that as well as we can, so that's my frustration. I don't want to throw the baby in the bath and hurt twenty-six kids, but honestly, we kind of already have. So and I know Mr. Schoenover's goal is to involve Owen College, that's the other piece of this. So it's broader than math, it's really about innovation, being flexible, and not continuing to do things because it's how we've done them. But if everybody, if Taunton High and Derby and and Pick a Town, they can do this, then why can't we? Our kids are just as bright, they deserve just as many opportunities, our faculty is just as talented, and will commit the resources to make it happen, but we have to push. So that's just my soapbox on that.
And I think that's regardless of the outcome of tonight's vote, right? Because I I don't want to vote on this, and then we just, we passed it. So now we don't have to think about doing those other challenging things to make the program of studies and the schedule more flexible and and accommodating, right? Like, I I think that work still needs to be done, no matter what the outcome of it will.
Can I just, so Taunton technically, though, and I don't want to, like, go back to Taunton, but Taunton only makes them pass two years of math. I know that's wild, but their minimum requirement is they have to pass math and geometry since the ed-camp requirements were removed. It's on their district website. I've seen it on their, so they have to take math, they don't have to pass those classes.
When did that change?
After the, after the, it's on, it's it's like, it's under their graduation requirements on their website.
They did also, after you left, they went from.
They lowered the requirements.
They they increased, they used to only have semester-based, right, when you were there? They have full year now, but I don't know enough about the ins and outs of the schedule to know exactly what changed in terms of.
They also added, in any case, we can, we can do, we can do better, and we'll, and we'll provide, I I think we would, as a community, provide the resources for that, but I I don't want, I I think I can guess how the rest feels. So if, I don't know, is there a motion? Or is there anyone else?
Well, I just wanted to mention one thing. I'm I'm looking at the policy as it reads, it does say twenty credits, which would mean they would have to do a full year. So if we're gonna, in fact, do that.
Yeah.
We would have to change that also, just down the line if we're gonna change.
And that was our intent, was to require students to graduate from Somerset Berkeley, they take and pass four full years of science, not three and a half years, not just experience something in a year, but four full years. That that's our goal. We believe, I I I agree with what you just said. Yes, we need to, we should, we should have established a four-year requirement earlier. And that that is our absolute goal. So it's just whether or not it begins with our current juniors or our current sophomores, that's really the question. And, you know, maybe there is, if we if we can implement a semester-based personal finance class or or in or some other sections, then maybe next year's senior class, it's a seventeen point five credit requirement where they at least have something in their, you know, or in another class or their senior because they would be taking it anyway, but.
Or could you pilot? Or maybe, or could, or could you pilot, like, some of the options that you mentioned, Mr. Lawrence, for those kids? And maybe, because I know how the votes go, maybe ten of the twenty-six are able to, maybe not do the full year, but maybe can be guided into a new course that you've developed that might be semesterized or something like that.
And it is, I believe, only in the senior year where we have an opportunity for a half-year class anyway, where backed up against their PE class, students are in here for a half-year study for that period. So there is an opportunity to back up one semester class against their PE. Could be elective areas, but it could be math as well.
And so even for those current juniors, if they did that, even if a few of you did it, they would be, they need the requirements for admission to college. You know, whether they choose to do that or not, but they would, they would need that. So it's a step.
But when they have the staff, does it support those half classes?
Well, for next, well, that's a conversation for the budget, right?
Right.
So I, it'd be great if, when we have our budget sub, those proposals or those needs, if they can be articulated, that would be very helpful to everybody.
The new courses for honors calculus, the pre-algebra, the small group math, that is like formalized now, those are all in the program of studies as well as Computer Science, the three options I talked about. Those are already in the program of studies, those are, like, solidified, we've already updated the flow chart to show all the options they have. So the only thing, and I talked to Mr. Schoenover about it the other day, to Dr. Schoenover, we talked about the possibility, we didn't think about a half-year, but we already had talked about the possibility of just piloting. We were talking about not, like, I was supposed to go on the year after, but it can be for next year if we have the staffing. That's an easy add because we have the content for it, it's just the person to to do that because I just don't know if we would have the staffing at this time to do that.
And like a motion?
Well, if I were to make a motion, I would make a motion to, whoop, Mr. Lawrence, to with the mathematics graduation requirements, not to be at four years, but effective with the commencing class of twenty twenty-eight because I just feel twenty twenty-seven is too early for this handful of juniors. So that's the motion.
A motion by Mr. Pasternak and second by Ms. Solomon. Anything for the round discussion? All those in favor?
Hi.
I'm gonna vote no. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Healthy discussion.
Thank you, Ms. Lawrence.
Yeah, and I'm happy to come back anytime we have questions or whatever.
Thank you very much.
Dr. Bell's already called, and she was not able to attend tonight. She she was planning on being here. Mr. Lawrence, do you know the the current status of the program of studies?
We, so we had to submit our proposals, we've already had our meetings, but it is not, like, science field delivered, it's just at the point now, I think, for review. So all of, like, I have, I don't know if Dr. Bell's prepared, if you want to have the draft of it, if you want me to share it with you at this time?
Well, I was just, I was asking a question, thank you. So is that, I I I know at the end of the meeting you'll usually do future actions, but is that something that you would want presented at the December sixteenth meeting? At least the the current state of it at that point?
The draft program? I would love to see it as soon as possible.
I think so. So that would be our next meeting, okay?
That'd be great. Thank you. The next, oh, can I also, related to this, and it could be for future use, I think it would be wise for us to maybe go back to policy and look at the language in terms of credits versus courses.
Okay.
So we do that. I can, yeah. I, and I, I think that I can imagine where, when we become more flexible and innovative and when we are looking at early college and other things to the program of studies, that language is not only going to be relevant to math, it can be relevant to other courses, too. So courses, credits, units, we want to think about how we talk about that.
So to be more in line with what the state says, or if it's
Math score or.
One unit of, or, you know, four units of math, the unit would be the equivalent of a four-year class. If there's a semester-based class, then it would be a point five or, what we'll look at.
Yeah, they, they do. Okay, next item in the agenda under Business Superintendent's report.
All right, so first of all, I do want to just wish, you know, our congratulations to our Somerset Berkeley field hockey team for winning another Division Two state championship this past weekend. They, not only do they have an outstanding season, but their their playoff run was just remarkable. I think, I I was keeping track of it and I lost track, but nine nothing, nine nothing, I think it was like five nothing, and then maybe a three to one, three nothing, and they did.
That's all right, Jeff.
They let up one goal in in the postseason. But they just, what a, what a great team. They did a phenomenal job, and I would love to invite them in for some recognition at our future meeting, if not our next meeting.
Last two games were extremely exciting, I can attest to.
They were.
I was out watching my daughter, so.
And on Saturday, it was, it was no score at the half. And we're having a little sidebar with Mr. Francis, and we're going through, you know, what is the scenario for overtime? We're saying, okay, seventy-seven twice, and it still has the penalty, penalty shots after that. And then, you know, just a couple of goals in a minute or so, and then that was it. And they'd be hanging three zero, so congratulations to them. Four four championships in eight years, a second back-to-back, so that was outstanding. I will pass things over to Ms. Haskell, who will give us a PD update since we had our full-day professional development.
Yep, November fourth, we had our full PD day. So we had a little bit of a split and a little bit of shift from what we have been doing the last couple of years. We have been doing ed camp the last few years, but with our PD pathways, we decided to do the beginning of the day in those PD pathways. So I know that I've shared them before, but I'm just, you know, for our at-home audience, right? Using technology to enhance learning, reaching and teaching all learners. We have an SEL pathway and also building thinking classrooms. And our guidance team has also been working together. We brought in Throughline Learning, and they have come in to work with our guidance team and to really solidify our curriculum for guidance and to really put together a scope and sequence and get counselors working in classrooms and pushing in and and doing some of the planning in terms of career, SEL. And Throughline is also working, and it has been for the past three years, with reaching and teaching all learners, really centered on ensuring that we are connecting with all of our students and that we are differentiating our instruction to meet students where they are and to really personalize learning in terms of a workshop model. And we, the other three pathways, we have some of our in-house team working with. we, the other three pathways, we have some of our in-house team working with our teachers. They are really hardworking, super talented and are sharing that with our teachers. So Matt Croft is the facilitator for using technology to enhance learning. This session, they were focused on Google Classroom organization, some add-ons, Gemini, and practice sets and YouTube questions. And so they've, they have been working through all of the sessions together and really, he works really hard to be responsive to the needs of the teachers who are in front of him. Also, each cohort, they have the opportunity to ask some questions and really kind of, he designs that professional learning for them. Our SEL pathway, we focused on de-escalating, de-escalation techniques and Lindsay Soares, who also works in district, worked with our, our SEL pathway. And building thinking classrooms, we have Mr. Chase, Ms. Bergmeyer and Ms. Cabral, and they are really working with our vertical non-permanent services or whiteboards and building the opportunities for kids to really think through problems and, and get them where they need to be, where the teacher is much more the facilitator of the learning and the kids are much more hands-on. And so they're working on designing those pieces. So those were the pathways for the morning. And in the afternoon, each of the departments worked together on some goals that they had or a variety of products. And there were some extended PDs. So our social studies team worked on Facing History and Ourselves Workshop, which is our genocide education and civics. We had received a grant and so they were working together on that. Our special education team was working with South Coast Education Collaborative and Assistive Technology Training. Our ELA team is, we may have mentioned, they have designed writing rubrics and so they were working on the calibration of those new writing rubrics and that implementation in the department. But we have also been looking at MCAS versus our Common Assessment Data Analysis and really rolling up those rubrics connected to our common assessments and MCAS throughout the school. There was math focused on some curriculum mapping, science and technology, they were working on their mid-year and final revisions in terms of the competency determination requirements with that lens. Wellness was, they're working on the new comprehensive health and phys ed curriculum frameworks, making sure that we are implementing and putting those into effect and rolling them into our current curriculum. And word language has been working on really updating and ensuring that our curriculum is in working order because, as you know, we have our new resources that we've been using the past two years. So music worked as a team, K through twelve, so they were collaborating and working together. And I think it's the first time that they've had the opportunity to do that really from K through twelve in a couple of years. And then art was really curriculum-focused. Our guidance team did stay in that PD pathway all day long, not just in the morning. And our leadership team actually was at the, they had PD at the police department and worked on their video training. So there was a lot happening, but it was, it was a really great day. We always do our, our reflective surveys and we actually did issue a really quick three-minute, I call it the three-minute survey to get some feedback on how people felt about the Ed Camp versus the PD pathways and what their preference was. So we'll use that data to, to make a determination about what we do for our full PD day next year.
Thank you.
And questions?
Thank you so much.
Sounds like it was a big day.
Let's see. For staff appointments or staff updates, just to, to share a couple of positions that are there, you know, really sad to see Lauren Minter go as one of our guidance counselors, but you'll see that her position is listed under resignation, but under appointments, we're also at the same time happy to have Kelly Porcenti's return to us. Kelly was a member of our guidance staff last year and then when we reduced from four full-time counselors to three full-time counselors, as the newest member of that department, she was reduced, but within the STA contract, if there was a reduction force due to budget cuts, then staff members are on two-year recalls, so we're able to recall Kelly into, back into her position to fill Lauren's vacancy. And I was going to mention a couple of other things, but I know under the next item is superintendent goals, so they'll tie into that, I think, a little bit better.
Thank you. And as Dr. Skolov mentioned, next item on the agenda, superintendent goals.
Right. So I sat down with, I met with Mrs. Andrews and Mrs. Ashley about maybe a month or so ago and presented some ideas for goals. I think I had six potential goals just to toss out there and the areas are professional practice, student learning, district improvement. So then you'll see the outcome of that where there is one goal for each. So for professional practices, deepening expertise and leadership and generative AI integration is one of the things that we are focusing on pretty extensively right now. The work started last spring when I created AI leadership team and we're meeting throughout the spring and then now into this fall. And we've been working on developing a draft AI policy. We do not have those guidelines right now, but we met last week, I think two weeks ago to develop what I think is a really strong AI policy. At this point, there's still a draft form, but that will be presented ultimately through our policy subcommittee for your review and approval before going to both school committees after that. Working with Ms. Haskell, bringing in some AI professional development, not just to build AI literacy for our staff, but then how, how does that transition to AI literacy for our students? And we've talked about this, I think, at every one of our student advisory committee meetings, just the impact and influence of AI and not just teaching, but in student learning and student use too. So there's a lot of work that needs to be done and that's why it's really, it was my professional practice goal and then also connected into the student learning goal, building AI literacy and teacher readiness. So it's my own professional practice with that, but then how does that filter down into teaching and learning? And then district improvement, as Ms. Andrews mentioned earlier, expanding for early college access. And we've already, Dr. Roseford and I have already met with representatives from Mass Darmouth, in Rich Water State University. I've had conversations with Radcliffe College as well, just to expand offerings and find ways of introducing some early college experiences here beginning next year. We have some of that happening now, but we really need to take what we're doing and really expand it greatly for our students. So those are the three areas that I'd like to focus on for this next year.
Could I just ask for the early college, Dr. Skolov, you mentioned, I know that you and Dr. Rose have done, have done some preliminary work on that conversation. Can you tell me a little bit about the plan for sort of like the team at the high schools in terms of implementing that? Who's going to be involved? I would expect that the head of school counseling would be crucial in that and sort of what the team is, also the person who's building her master schedule. So I'm just curious to see if you've gotten that far in thinking about achieving that goal. Who's going to, who are the key players?
Kim Takuta, who does create our, our master schedule, is certainly a big component of that because these early college classes gets into the previous conversation of our semester classes because we know colleges only offer classes on a semester basis. So having her involved in this work and Ms. Coogan, but not just Ms. Coogan, but really having our, our guidance staff involved as well. I don't know to what extent Dr. Roseford has had conversations with some of those individuals. I have not yet, but I will, will be able to recall back to you.
Yes, thank you.
I would encourage you to involve somebody from technology as the professors often need safe access to our students. So I know that I'm involved in that in my district, so.
Okay.
Good point. Other questions? I would entertain a motion to approve the 2025, 2026 superintendent goals for Dr. Skolov as presented.
So moved.
Settled.
Motion by Ms. Ashley and seconded by Mr. Pasternak. Anything further on discussion? None. All those in favor?
No.
Opposed? So voted. Thank you, Dr. Skolov. Next on the agenda, strategic planning subcommittee update.
Do we really have?
We haven't met, but I've been putting together the list of people to invite to be part of this, the event that we will have in the winter, both the adults and students. And I expect those invitations to go out after Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Questions? Next on the agenda, OPEB, sorry, other post-employment benefits subcommittee update. Mr. Pasternak?
Okay. I think we had a pretty productive last meeting. So we did have a presentation from Laura Strickland from PRIM. She did very well. We're doing very well this year so far year to date. I think we've had positive monthly returns every month this year with the exception of February. So the investments are doing very well. This year, we have approximately one point seven million dollars in the OPEB trust. The big discussion at our meeting though was, actually it arose from the prior meeting, was about expanding the board of trustees so that we can have this hopefully continuous base of knowledge around what we're doing so that if people come off the board, there's someone there to kind of, you know, pick up right in their spot. So we voted as a subcommittee to expand the board to twelve, twelve members. Where the increase was is currently we have one citizen from each of the two towns, Somerset and Berkeley. We wanted to expand that to two citizens from each town. And then currently we have one current employee of the district and one retired employee of the district. And we also wanted to expand both of those to two. And the discussion was, we felt it was very important to keep those balanced because, you know, OPEB is there for really the benefit of the retired employees of the school district. So it's very important to have people from the STA or retired members there to make sure they feel they're being served and then also citizens from the town because, you know, they're the taxpayers and they're the ones funding this and, you know, they should have equal say as well. So we did take a vote to expand it. However, I believe from our discussion afterwards with Robyn is that we do need a full vote of the school committee to affect that change to the declaration. So I would seek to get a motion tonight or I'll make the motion that we expand the board to the twelve members as I had outlined in the update and also if there were, after that, if there's any questions too about the, if we haven't answered them as well. So.
I will second yours, but open to discussion and questions, obviously. Mike and I will have to do. Motion by Mr. Pasternak, seconded by Ms. Ferrer. Any questions or anything on discussion?
Just support it, you know, for continuity purposes. I think it's important that we make sure that things don't, knowledge doesn't die out as people move on to, you know, other aspects of it.
Yep. So, I mean, and that's how we really felt is, you know, let's say you're a retired person, if he's there or she is there for eight, 10 years and they're already retired, they may not want to stick around forever. So it'd be good to have another one so that if that person abruptly, you know, moves on to, you know, another bright horizons, there's someone there to kind of train the new person coming in, you know, from their perspective.
And elected officials are elected.
Yeah. Well, it's always true. We didn't expand any additional school committee members because it's just a two.
No, it was just in terms of like the knowledge.
Yep, right.
Because there's, there's no telling whether or not we get reelected or get reappointed to that board.
And our hope was that, you know, seeing like right now, it's Kim and I, if we're no longer here, there'll be other committee members who've been on it this year or two and have the basic understanding of it and everything, the other committee members.
And I think the other discussion, the only thing we need, we're going to put this out to anybody that wanted to apply. And I think we were talking, well, first we were doing December first, but I think we're going to bump this to the end of December, but still before the end of the year. So we can bring it back to the board and then decide who's going to be those members based on whoever's applies that wants to be on. And we also have to reach out to the STA. With the STA, we'll have to put something out to their, their membership to, to be interested.
Can I ask a couple of questions? So should there be, should the person have knowledge of investments already? So I'm thinking just members of the STA and one teacher comes to mind, our business teacher who has extensive knowledge, would we want to almost invite that person? He would hope that, he would wish to, you know, serve in this role, right? And, you know, put his name out there to be nominated. However, the teachers association holds their internal elections, you know, we would hope that maybe this person would come forward and, you know, choose to fill the role and then hopefully the membership would go upon him or her. And also. That's a great point. We'd love to have someone who has that. So it's not a requirement, but it's. It's not a requirement, but. It's a strong recommendation to have some background in, in this area. Okay. And my other question is in terms of advertising, what would be the best way for us to get the word out to both Somerset and Berkeley communities through putting and posting on the town's websites, not just our own? Because I don't think anyone really, people don't read the newspaper, but I don't think that's going to get. I mean, the way things work in Somerset, my thing was, you know, like with the talent bank they have on the town side, you know, on the town website can, you know, citizens can put their name to the talent bank and when a board appointment comes up, they can, you know, apply for that position. So I guess we'd reach out to Mr. Alucci here in Somerset, ask him to put something on his website that, you know, on the town website, you know, seeking a candidate for that. Then his counterpart in Berkeley.
Yeah, we don't have a talent.
You don't have a talent pool.
But you must, do you have something where?
Both. We could definitely.
Because I know obviously Berkeley has probably as many boards and committees as we have here in Somerset. And whatever process you would use for, you know, advertising in Berkeley.
We need to try to put it in front of people's faces beyond just the website because for me to see it on the website, I have to go to the website, know it's there already, right? So.
We could ask, ask, could bring it to the map.
Our town administrative board selectmen, they can make an agenda item on their next meeting and announce it.
Maybe George Austin could do a little article in the Somerset Sentinel.
Remember how many applicants you got for van drivers when I put that?
Yeah.
Does Berkeley have a Somerset Sentinel equivalent?
The Somerset Sentinel.
It's my age.
Perfect.
We will, we'll definitely, if we put in a central place, then we'll, we'll spread the word and get it out.
Awesome. Thank you.
I often hear from Berkeley residents following up on, oh, I read in the Somerset Sentinel.
Well, I take, I take a lot of Mr. Austin's votes and put them on the page that I run, you know, schools, it's school-specific, the page that I run. So I take a lot of foot and he does the work and I just take the.
Credit.
Credit. No, I do not take the credit.
No, I do not take the credit.
So that page would be great to advertise.
Yes, yes.
No concerns about maintaining a form if we expand?
Yeah, no, because it's still, we're not adding any additional school committee members, so it would still just.
Oh, I just need to have.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, yes. Yeah, I mean, so far we've had two wins and.
Awesome.
No problem.
We haven't had any issues with that.
Okay, great.
Does it require a form? If we were to take votes on things like this?
Yes. Anything else on discussion? All right, so we have a motion and a second. There's nothing else on discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So voted. Thank you very much. Okay. Next on the agenda, we have policies for first reading. We have two, we have competency determination, policy IKFE, which is an amendment, and policy BEDH, which is public participation at school committee meetings, which was an amendment, not really in substance, but basically because the Somerset schools amended theirs, right? So we made two separate policies, but we didn't make any substantive changes. Did I get that right, Robyn?
Yes.
Okay, great. Are we okay to take these together?
Yeah.
Okay, so I would entertain a motion to approve the first reading of the following policies, competency determination, IKFE, and public participation at school committee meetings, BEDH. Second, motion by Ms. Ferrer, seconded by Ms. Ashley, anything on discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So voted. And next, we have policies for second reading. There are several. Access to building new grounds, ECAB slash ECABR, which is an amendment, gifts to and solicitations by staff, GDEBC, student fundraising activities, JJE, athletic concussion policy, JJIF, relations with parent booster organizations, KVE, parent advisory councils, KBG, that sounds ominous, I'm not going to define, and school visitor policy, KI. Are folks okay to take these together?
Yeah.
Any questions? I just had one thing I noticed, just housekeeping on ECAB dash R. In the body of it, it refers to Somerset Public Schools, and it means to say.
Some sort of.
Yeah. It was, it's really just the type of, other than that, I think it was like in the second part.
Yeah.
Good catch. Okay. If there's nothing, then I would entertain a motion to amend or adopt the policies as presented for second reading. So motion by Ms. Ferrer, seconded by Ms. Corville. Anything further on discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So voted. Thank you. Our friends in policies for the base of the policy. Next on the agenda, other matters in informational. We are pleased to have been presented with the donation of a bass guitar to the music department from Donna Souza. Does anyone have any questions? If not, I would entertain a motion to gratefully accept the donation of a bass guitar to the music department from Donna Souza. So.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Ferrer and seconded by Mr. Pasternak. Anything on discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So voted. Next on the agenda, Berkeley and Somerset updates. Ms. Solomon, you have the updates from Berkeley?
Sure. So we had, we just met last night. There wasn't much to our agenda in the first place, and we're a pretty efficient group, so I think our meeting was all of maybe 20 minutes. So really, honestly, there wasn't much. Our principals weren't able to attend last night. So we did have some policies that we moved for a second reading. A lot of them are the same as what we're discussing here in Somerset, Berkeley. I did want to note that our superintendent today spoke at the governor's listening session for the chapter 70 funding to advocate for Berkeley and, you know, advocate fair and equitable funding. So she spoke on our behalf. We're so lucky to have her advocating for us. She's phenomenal. We had, at the end of October, we had an election for our Board of Selectmen, just to note that. So we now have, we filled that vacant spot, so we now have a full three-person Board. Mr. Mark Horstfall is our newest member of our Board of Selectmen. And then just to mention, we have our lights on ceremony on December 7th on the Common, and it's not just Berkeley specific. It's open to anybody who wants to attend. We light up the Common, Santa comes, fire trucks, it's great, it's fun. That's all I have.
Thank you very much. Somerset update? Do you want a person?
Sure.
Ours wasn't 20 minutes.
We're really quick.
And so we had our report from our, our middle school rep. There's a lot of sports and there's dance, there's PTO online store, there's donation drives, there's a food drive, spirit week, so there's lots going on at the middle school. We also had a Chase student presentation that was fantastic as a former Chase mom. They came in and presented about the VIP lounge. They gave us VIP passes, so we can all go there whenever we'd like. I'm looking forward to that. A citation for a retiring teacher at Chase, Cara Hargreaves, who is outstanding. She's going to be missed by many. We had updates from the director of building new grounds on facilities and the custodian staff. The big topic of discussion was the custodial staff, so we will be bringing that to the budget table to hopefully get some more custodians onboard. The redistricting committee opened up the open meeting while complaint that was filed by Patrick. We had some public input, we approved minutes. The middle school building committee, they are working on improvements on HVAC, microphones, the lockers are still a subject, paint, chairs for assemblies, they're getting some quotes for that, and protected flooring. The superintendent report was very exciting. The MSBA approved the north windows and doors, so we'll be bringing that to town meeting in January. What else? What else, Jen? Staff appointments and resignations. We also had a bunch of policies to amend. I need to read. And that's about it.
Yeah, that's about it. Thank you very much. Okay, next on the agenda, topics not anticipated by the chair. I have nothing. Action items for future meetings. I was just looking at the calendar, Robyn, and my friend in the budget subcommittee, and I think we usually start meeting in January, which is coming up. So I'm thinking maybe we should do a poll to start to think about our first meeting. Whenever that makes sense, please administration. I go with that on the way here. All right. And other items for future meetings? I'll be thinking of anything later, so you know. Okay, next on the agenda is to consider approval of open session minutes of October 21st, 2025. Is anyone in motion?
I'm in motion.
Ms. Solomon, seconded. Mrs. Ferrera, all those in favor?
Aye.
I will stand if I was asked.
So voted? And I would entertain a motion for your.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We, somebody. Motion, second. All those in favor? Great, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.